Good evening First Baptist Family. I'm so excited that you have chosen to join us for this online Bible study as we're walking through the Psalms of Scripture in the Old Testament. It's a privilege to lead us tonight in a discussion looking specifically at Psalms 84 through 88. And so if you have your Bibles, I encourage you to open up or to turn on a copy of God's Word to the book of Psalms, specifically looking at Psalms 84 through 88. And all these Psalms that we're going to be looking at over the next few minutes together, all deal with God's presence. Or in more specific terms, what we want to look at today is the fact that God's presence is offered to all who turn to Him. And so really excited to open up God's Word with you today, whenever you're watching this video. And I just hope and pray that you see God's character being played out in these different texts of Scripture and that we learn and glean from His Word today. So if you will, let's get started together. One of the most unique things in life to me is just how vast and big our world is. Planet Earth, the world that you and I live in and on today, is a vast and huge world created by our great and holy God. But the fact that our world is large and it's vast in a number of ways, maybe you're like me and you've had experiences like this, but as big as our world is, oftentimes our world can feel really small. And what I mean by that is, and maybe you've been like me in certain situations where in life you make a new friend, you make a new acquaintance, if you will, and you discover that this new individual that you befriended has many mutual friends with you. You could travel across the world and meet a new friend named John and discover that this John knows many of your friends back home in the state of Alabama. Or you discover that this new friend, John, has lived or resided in many of the places that you've lived in in your life. Does that make sense? Maybe in some ways that the world is just kind of felt small because of all the different relationships that you've built with other people. And you discover that new friends and new acquaintances have similar life stories and similar mutual friends. This happens to me a lot, especially in ministry, as I meet new pastors and make new friends as church leaders and just discover that we have a lot of connections with each other. And so in more specific terms, more spiritual terms, I want you to think about today in this session, the people that you meet in life, the new friends, the new acquaintances that you meet and make in your life, do these people have a connection with the Lord Himself? Do these people know and have experienced the Holy Presence of God? As we look at Psalms 84 through 88, all these Psalms that we're going to be looking at over the next couple of minutes together, all have to deal with God's presence and the fact that people are longing for satisfaction and they're longing for fulfillment in this life and that people must recognize and know that the presence of God brings us that satisfaction, brings us fulfillment in this life. And God's presence is offered to everyone who turns to Him. And so these Psalms are going to be dealing with that. And as we get to this idea, I want you to know that as we have an awareness of God's presence, it's going to help us and be developed into living a vibrant Christian life that follows after Jesus. And so as we get to Psalms 84 and Psalms 88, or through those five Psalms, four out of these five Psalms are written by the sons of Quora, which was addressed in a previous session. But these were people who were gatekeepers of the temple. They were on the security team, if you will, and guarding the temple during the annual festivals that would take place at the temple. And many of these gatekeepers, the sons of Quora, were also musicians. And so they had a couple of different roles. Some were on the security team and some were on the worship team for the festivals and the services that would take place at the temple. And so four out of these five Psalms were written by the sons of Quora. And then Psalm 86, as we'll look at in a second, was written by King David Himself. And so again, if you have your Bibles, let's turn now to Psalm 84. Psalm 84, if you're taking notes, this could be summarized and titled, "Longing for God's House." Longing for God's House. This Psalm is a prayer written by the sons of Quora. Longing, kind of the theme is this longing to be in the Holy Presence of God in the Jerusalem Temple. And so as we walk through this, again, just for time's sake, just knowing the fact that the psalmist here has this longing to be with the Lord. And as you read through this text, then we'll see, "The psalmist was very familiar with this annual pilgrimage to the temple that the Jews would make annually to these festivals in the temple." And so the psalmist here in Psalm 84 is longing to be in the house of God. And so if you have your Bibles, look at it with me in Psalm 84. We'll look at verses one through four together. The Holy Word of God says this, "How lovely is your dwelling place, O Lord of hosts! My soul longs, yes, faints for the courts of the Lord; my heart and flesh sing for joy to the living God. Even the sparrow finds a home in the swallow a nest for herself, where she may lay her young, at your altars, O Lord of hosts, my king and my God. Blessed are those who dwell in your house, ever singing your praise." And so right here at the very beginning of Psalm 84, we're given the psalmist writing these words, writing this Psalm, writing this song of praise, longing to be in the house of the Lord God Almighty. This was a person who was longing and waiting to be in the presence of God. And not just to be outside the temple, but to be in the temple where God dwelt with His people in the Old Testament, someone who was, could not wait to be worshiping the holy living God in worship, could hardly wait to praise the Lord. I love the wording here, just how lovely is your dwelling place, "O Lord of hosts! My soul longs to be with you in worship." So you see this longing to be in the presence, to be worshiping God Himself in this text. Verse four, "Blessed are those who dwell in your house, ever singing your praise." And as you move through Psalm 84, let's look at this, verses five through seven. The psalmist continues on by saying, "Blessed are those whose strength is in you, in whose heart are the highways to Zion. As they go through the valley of Baca, they make it a place of springs; the early rain also covers it with pools; they go from strength to strength; each one appears before God in Zion." And so right here in this section of the Scripture, the psalmist is portraying what it would have been like for the Jews to make a pilgrimage to the temple annually and that there were long stretches without water, maybe without shelter. But these people drew their strength from their Lord as they entered into God's presence, as they sought after God's presence to get to this temple, as they were making their way there. And so we're given this notion of the fact that God gives us the strength as we pursue Him, as we enter into His courts with thanksgiving, as we enter into His presence in a place of worship. But I want to conclude Psalm 84 as we look at verse 10 here, a very familiar verse, but it's such a beautiful reminder of who God is, what His character is like, and what it calls us to be. And verse 10, it says this, "For a day in your courts is better than a thousand elsewhere. I would rather be a doorkeeper in the house of my God than dwell in the tents of wickedness." As the psalmist is saying here, as he's concerned in this pilgrimage, what he's saying is that a day with the Lord, one day with God, is better than a thousand days anywhere else in this life. More specifically, what he says there is that one day with the Lord, just being a doorkeeper to the temple, being so close to His presence, right, is better than a thousand days anywhere else, even in the midst of the comfort of the things of this world. I think about how just powerful the wording here is in this text. I mean, I would love to take a vacation for a thousand days to a place like Europe. I mean, that would just be amazing, right? Just a thousand days, going on a trip throughout the countries of Europe. To me, that would be just an incredible experience. But it's this reminder to us that one day in the Holy Presence of God is far superior to anything this life has to offer, that there is no place, this is why I want you to understand here in this text, is that there's no place like being in God's presence. It's such a beautiful truth and a reminder for us that there's no place like being in the Holy Presence of God. Now moving on, we go to Psalm 85. And if you're taking notes, Psalm 85 could really be entitled, "A Prayer of Restoration." We all need restoration in our lives as we're walking in Jesus, that we need to be restored and continually be built up in Jesus Christ. And as you get to Psalm 85, you see this just beautiful prayer, this heartfelt prayer, this plea for God to restore His people. And Psalm 85, again, is written by one of the sons of Quora. And as we get here, I just want us to read together verses one through seven. And so this is what Psalm 85, verses one through seven, says, "Lord, you were favorable to your land; you restored the fortunes of Jacob; you forgave the iniquity of your people; you covered all their sin, Selah. You withdrew all your wrath; you turned from your hot anger. Restore us again, O God of our salvation, and put away your indignation toward us. Will you be angry with us forever? Will you prolong your anger to all generations? Will you not revive us again, that your people may rejoice in you? Show us your steadfast love, O Lord, and grant us your salvation." Now we get to Psalm 85, right? And this Psalm really, friends, is a Psalm of lament and petition, if you will. It's this community that was in a time of distress and they were asking God to show mercy to His people once again, as He had done in the past. You see that kind of in the first three verses, that this outline of God, that He showed mercy and faithfulness to His people in the past. And these people here in this moment, the sons of Quora, are asking God to be faithful in the present, to be faithful once again, to revive their spiritual life, to draw them closer to God Himself, to draw them closer into His presence, as He had done in the past. Have you ever heard a speaker or a pastor, a Christian author, if you will, ask a question like this? When you feel the lack of a close relationship with God, who moved? You or God? Maybe you've heard a question like that. And the truth of the matter, friends, is that God is always near to His children. Amen? So when we walk in disobedience, when we neglect worship, when we neglect studying His Word and rooting ourselves in prayer and rooting ourselves in biblical gospel-centered community, when we neglect those things, we must understand that it's not God who moved away from us, but it's we, His people, who moved away from Him. We've stepped away from His presence. And while that's true, the psalmist here in this text, in Psalm 85, is pleading with God to return. But as you would see in this Psalm, is that God did not leave His people, is that these people left God's presence. And so again, Psalm 85, the sons of Quora are crying out to God, pleading with God to return to them, is that as you would move through this text, as you would move through this Psalm, is that these people desperately needed to be in God's presence. And as you would move through this Psalm, you would understand that these people would have to recognize that God truly was near to them and that they truly had disobeyed and had fallen short and had stepped away from His presence and that they needed to turn back to Him, knowing His presence was offered to all who turn to the Father. And that as they returned to His presence, that they would be renewed and restored and who God has called them to be and what God has called them to do. And so the very end of this incredible chapter, these people would be praying and that they would be awaiting God's response, that He would continue remaining faithful to His people. But this is what I want you to know, as you look at this story, as you look at this text specifically, is that oftentimes, what I want you to know is that when God feels distant from you, know that He is near. Know that He is near to His people. When it feels like God is distant, know that He is near. Friends, it's in His character. As we're studying these Psalms of praise, these Psalms of confession, these Psalms of adoration, and these heartfelt cries, know in this specific Psalm, that the truth of the matter is this, for you and I, is that God is near to His people. God is near to us. And as the Psalm begins with a voice of fearful desperation, calling God to be mindful to His people, in the end, we see, as you would read through Psalm 85, the glory of God is what gives the people hope that God has not left His people. Just a beautiful reminder for us today. Now Psalm 86. Psalm 86, we turn, and as I said, Psalm 84 through 88, all deal with God's Holy Presence with His people. And four of these Psalms are written by the sons of Quora. But we get to Psalm 86, and it's right dab in the middle of this section in this session. And Psalm 86 is written by David Himself. And this is a beautiful heartfelt prayer. And it teaches us a lot about how we should pray, how we ought to pray in times of trouble, in times of distress, in difficult circumstances that we may face in this life. And I love David's raw emotion in Psalm 85. It's beautiful. It teaches us a lot about how we should pray to the Lord and with the Lord. And what you'd see is, as you look at this text, is that David was in a really broken place. He was in a place of utter helplessness, if you will, and he was pleading for God to deliver him out of this situation. And as you'd come to the conclusion of this text in Psalm 85, is that David would understand that any hope of returning into a relationship back with God is solely based on the character of God, because he knew that God was a God who could deliver him. He knew that God was a faithful, gracious, merciful, and steadfast in His love towards David. And so here's what I want us to see. I want us to look at verses one through 13. I know it's a lot here, but one through 13 kind of just kind of brings it all together of what David is kind of writing here. So look at this with me, Psalm 86. He says, "Incline your ear, O Lord, and answer me, for I am poor and needy. Preserve my life, for I am godly; save your servant who trusts in you. You are my God; be gracious to me, O Lord, for to you do I cry all the day. Glad in the soul of your servant, for to you, O Lord, do I lift up my soul. For you, O Lord, are good and forgiving, abounding in steadfast love to all who call upon you. Give ear, O Lord, to my prayer; listen to my plea for grace. In the day of my trouble I call upon you, for you answer me." Verse eight, "There is none like you among the gods, O Lord; nor are there any works like yours. All the nations you have made shall come and worship before you, O Lord, and shall glorify your name; for you are great and do wondrous things; you alone are God." Verse 11, "Teach me your way, O Lord, that I may walk in your truth; unite my heart to fear your name. I give thanks to you, O Lord, my God, with my whole heart, and I will glorify your name forever; for great is your steadfast love toward me. You have delivered my soul from the depths of jail." So here in this passage, we really see this earnest plea, this prayer of lament and petition. Again, you could entitle this Psalm, David's lament and petition, of what you see him bringing before the Lord. And really, you get to verses one through seven, and you really see David's call for help in this situation. You see a call for, he was in a desperate place. You see this urgency in his wording here, in his emotion. And what's important to see too, is in verses one through seven, you kind of see this pattern, if you will, being played out. You see his petition being made and what he's asking God to do. And it's also expressed following a reason for why God should grant his request. For example, if you will, I mean, look back at verse one, David says, "Incline your ear, O Lord," or "God, listen to me." And he gives a reason why God should listen to him. "Listen to me, God, for I am poor and needy." Or verse two, "Lord, preserve my life." That's his petition. This is his request. Why should God grant that to him? Because he's godly. And so you kind of see this pattern in the first seven verses for David laying out his cry, laying out his petition, and also laying out reasons why God should answer him. It's just neat to see that here. But what you see here in Psalm 86 is that you see David in an utter place of helplessness and quite honestly, what seems like a place of hopelessness for David in this situation. But David is sure that God will answer him. He is sure, as he speaks about here in this text, that God has, His very nature is a God that's merciful and gracious and faithful, and He's a God who forgives His people. He is a God who guides His people. I love that in verses eight through 10, that God, or that David just magnifies the Lord's sovereignty over His people, right? That he says that, "God, you are incomparable to any other gods in this universe, in this world, that you are the one holy true God above every other little God, little G gods in this world. You are the one true God, and no one compares to your wondrous works." And so what's important to note there too, is that David recognized the sovereignty and the power of God here in his prayer, in this petition. And it's important to note this, because David acknowledges the power of God, David fully believes, because of God's power, that God has the power to rescue David out of his current trouble, out of his current situation, to bring him out of a place of defeat and out of his place of trouble. And so as he moved through this text, actually in verse 14, we would be given the actual reason for David's trouble. You learn in verse 14, that people were actually after David. They were trying to kill him. They were coming after him. They were enemies of the Lord, coming after David Himself. And David is asking God to deliver him from his enemies, to deliver him out of this trouble, knowing that God can deliver him. And again, once again, David acknowledges throughout this text, God's character, His faithfulness, His provision, His sovereignty, His grace, His mercy. And what David acknowledges, friends, is that he knows that, he recognizes this throughout the Psalm, is that God has been faithful to David over the past. He's been faithful to His people. And what David is acknowledging in this heartfelt prayers, that, "God, because I know and I'm clinging to the promises of your word, you've been faithful to me, you've been faithful to your people in the past, and God, I'm clinging to the truth that you are going to remain faithful to me. You're going to be with me, you're going to go before me, because your presence goes with me. It goes before me, and I'm trusting in you alone as I walk through this valley." And what I want you to know, friends, as you look at Psalm 86, is that if God was faithful to His people in the past, know that God is going to remain faithful to His people in the present and even into the future, that we serve a faithful God. Amen? That God is faithful to His people from generation to generation, and that David reminds us of His truth. He reminds us of God's power and His authority, of His grace, of His mercy, and His faithfulness. And so we can bring our troubles and our worries to the Lord, knowing that He's going to be faithful and be with us in the times of trouble. Just a beautiful reminder for us today. Now moving into Psalm, chapter 87. Psalm 87, it's the shortest Psalm in our time together in this section, in this session, Psalm 87. And if you're taking notes, again, you can kind of entitle this, "The City of God." You could entitle Psalm 87, "The City of God." And I don't want to read the whole Psalm here, but just kind of give you a picture. I want us to read together verses one through three. And this is what the Word of God says in Psalm 87, verses one through three. "On the holy mount stands the city he founded. The Lord loves the gates of Zion more than all the dwelling places of Jacob. Glorious things of you are spoken, O city of God, Selah." Now, as I've read through this Psalm many, many times in preparation, just as I've studied it and just heard other people speak into this text, this is kind of a difficult Psalm to kind of read, just because there's a lot of things going on. It's a short condensed Psalm, but at first glance, you're like, man, what in the world am I reading here, right? What's exactly taking place? But just kind of summarize what's kind of taking place in this Psalm, what we kind of learn and glean from, that what God wants us to learn from His Word through this specific text, is that as you come to this Psalm, like all the Psalms we're talking about in this session, all are dealing with God's presence and the fact that all who turn to the Lord are offered the Holy Presence of God and that we know that if we are a child, if we're a son or a daughter of the Lord Himself, that God's presence lives inside of us. That's a beautiful truth and beautiful reminder for us today, that the Holy Presence of God, through the power of the Holy Spirit, lives inside of you and me, if you are a child of God, if you've placed your faith in Him. And like the other Psalms and like this one, we're reminded of that truth. But this Psalm is really, is speaking about the city of God or eternity itself, if you will. That what we learn here in Psalm 87, as you can kind of summarize it, is that the sons of Quora were reminding us and just the fact that all nations, friends, all nations, all people groups, all tribes, had the opportunity to know God personally and to experience joy in being in His presence. This Psalm, this text, causes us to think about Zion or the city of God, if you will. Mount Zion throughout Scripture would be this picture or this metaphor for heaven itself, for eternity itself, and why we celebrate that. And this is good news for the child of God, that life doesn't end here on earth, that we are welcomed into eternity as we leave this earth one day, as we pass from death to life, that we are with the Lord in His presence for eternity forever. And that's great news for us. And this Psalm invites us to think about these things, to pause, to think about the glorious things that we will experience in eternity, in the holy city of God and in His kingdom. What we see in this Psalm, friends, too, is that it invites us to think about the fact that God's presence is involved in His mission. God's mission is to make His presence known among the nations. That's what we see here. That's what we see throughout Scripture, is God's presence being made known to His people. That's a big part of God's mission, that God wants to have a relationship with His people, with His creation. And we get to have a relationship with our Heavenly Father. And what's so beautiful and what's so impactful to us is that God wants us to be a part of that mission, as we share the good news, as we reach people for Jesus, as we live our lives in such a way that points people to Christ through our words and through our actions, that we get to be a part of reaching people for Christ so that people can experience and know God personally, to receive His presence in their lives, so that people can cross from death to life, to find fulfillment and joy and satisfaction, and to be longing to be in the presence of God for eternity, that we get to be a part in that mission and making His presence known among the nations. Every tribe, every people group, every tongue worshiping together for eternity. That's a beautiful picture of eternity there. But then lastly, we get to Psalm 88. Psalm 88 is where Psalm 88 is where we conclude our time together. Psalm 88, maybe many of you have read this Psalm. I don't know if you have or not before today, but as you come to this text, as you come to Psalm 88, Psalm 88, friends, has become widely known, honestly, as the saddest book, or saddest chapter in all of Scripture. It's a very depressing Psalm, if you will. It's hard to read. It's just full of grief and sorrow and pain and suffering. It's a really hard Psalm to get through, honestly. It's very dark and depressing. But as you look into it, I want you to see that there is hope at the end of the, you know, in a dark tunnel. There's light at the end of the tunnel for us. There is hope in hopeless situations in this life. There is hope in helpless situations. There is hope in trouble situations in life, and the circumstances that we face. So Psalm 88 is a really difficult passage. It's really sad. It's, you know, one of the, or if not the most saddest chapters in all of Scripture. And the Psalmist here, again, one of the sons of Korah writes this Psalm, and it really touches on just a passionate appeal for God's presence to be there in the midst of trouble, in the midst of someone who is facing intense suffering and pain in their life. And really, as you would read this story, as you'd read this text, this is somebody who is really on the edge of death itself. And so, this Psalm, it truly begins in darkness, and it ends in darkness. Literally, the last word of the Psalm is darkness. And so, it begins and ends in this way. But for those of you who are watching this video, maybe you've experienced genuine, true suffering, deep, dark pain and suffering in your life. As you read through Psalm 88, maybe you can resonate with the words of the Psalmist here. And I really do truly believe that this Psalm teaches us a lot about how we ought to pray to the Lord, how we should speak with the Lord in times of distress, and to remain hopeful and faithful, even in the deep, dark days that we may face in this life. But as we kind of conclude our time together, I want us to look at Psalm 88, verses one through nine. And so, look at this with me. The word of God says this, "O Lord, God of my salvation, I cry out day and night before you. Let my prayer come before you; incline your ear to my cry; for my soul is full of troubles, and my life draws near to Sheol. I am counted among those who go down to the pit. I am a man who has no strength, like one set loose among the dead, like the slain that lie in the grave, like those whom you remember no more, for they are cut off from your hand. You have put me in the depths of the pit, in the regions dark and deep." Verse seven, "Your wrath lies heavy upon me, and you overwhelm me with all your waves, Selah. You caused my companions to shun me; you have made me a horror to them. I am shut in, so that I cannot escape. My eye grows dim through sorrow. Every day I call upon you, O Lord; I spread out my hands to you." Friends, again, this Psalm is extremely difficult to wrestle with and to read. I know it has been for me, but you know, you see the beginning of the Psalm, that the Psalmist begins with a cry. He's been crying out day and night. The Psalmist wanted his prayer, these words here, to reach the Lord Himself. But what's important to note here is that you see in the very first verse, that the Psalmist acknowledges who God is. He says, "God, you are the God of my salvation." And so, even as he's writing the Psalm in this petition, this heartfelt cry, and this grief, and this pain, and his suffering, he knows who God is. He knows that God is the God of his salvation, and that he's still clinging to that truth, that God is his provider, that God is his sustainer, that God is the God of his salvation. And so, nonetheless, he wants God to hear and answer his cry. And then verses three through eight, as we just read, or three through seven, you'd see the reasons for his cry. This was a guy who had no strength, that he was on the edge of death, that he was in an intense place of suffering, that he had been through suffering for most of his life. And you see that through this text. And so, he's still alive, but with little strength, and he's casting blame on God. And he's casting all these troubles upon God. But while he's casting blame on God, he understands that God is really the only one who can deliver him out of this place of suffering. And so, it's a really, it's a really hard text to wrestle with, and really to read, because as you read through the end of this text, he would really, he'd be asking God all these rhetorical questions that he knew the answer to, that God still was his provider, that God still was faithful, but this man wanted to be used by God. He still wanted to continue pressing on and worship with the Lord Himself. He truly had a desperate heart to be healed, to be in God's presence. You see that, this person had suffered for a long time. The Psalmist, he didn't understand why he was going through the things he was going with. And you know, we get to this in today's life, and suffering is hard to deal with. It's hard to wrestle with, and there's oftentimes, we have a lot of questions, and why am I going through this? Why is this happening in my life? And friends, you know, just as we think about suffering, is that we live in a broken, fallen system. And there's reasons, you know, there's reasons for why we go through pain and suffering. But I want to encourage you today to recognize that as we go through the deep, dark days, maybe like the Psalmists, maybe deep, genuine, dark suffering, to give you hope today, friends, that our God is near to you, that our God is near to His people. And what's beautiful about this text too, is that the Psalmist continually went back to God. And I think that's a reminder and a reflection for us today, is that if we're in a place of deep, dark suffering, that we would be like the Psalmist and continue praying each and every day. It's almost like the Psalmist was saying, "God, you didn't answer my prayer today, but God, you can count on me being back tomorrow. I'm going to keep pressing in, I'm going to keep pressing on, I'm going to keep asking, I'm going to keep complaining and just unleashing all my troubles and all my anxieties and all my worries before you, Lord, knowing that you can deliver me, knowing that you can provide for me, knowing that you have been faithful, and I'm trusting you in the midst of these deep, dark days. God, give me hope, give me patience, give me just the life that comes from you. Give me strength to press on, God. And if you don't answer my prayer, I'm going to keep coming back to you tomorrow, again, and again, and again. God, may my eyes be fixed upon you." Friends, if you're watching this video, I want to encourage you, as best as I know how, if you're facing deep and dark days, to know the truth, that in times of life where God may appear to be silent, know that He is not absent. That silence of God does not equate with absence of God. And that's a beautiful reminder, a beautiful truth for us today, that even in dark, hard days, difficult days, that there is still hope, that there is a day when we will enter eternity with God, being His presence with no more tears, no more suffering, no more pain. But as we live our lives here on earth, that we can continue pressing in and pressing on to who God has called us to be and what He's called us to do, because His holy presence lives and dwells inside of us, that He does love and care for His people, that He is merciful towards us, that He is gracious towards us, that He is a forgiving Father who leads us into paths of righteousness, that just because at times God may appear to be silent doesn't mean He's absent. He is near to His people. And so, I just want to conclude by reading the chorus of a very familiar hymn to us. And it's the hymn called "Turn Your Eyes Upon Jesus," one that's very familiar to us, First Baptist Montgomery, one we recite and cling to and sing a lot, because it's so important for us to cling to the promises found in Scripture, but to cling to the presence of God, to focus our eyes and our gaze upon Jesus. And the words of that hymn would go like this. "Turn your eyes upon Jesus; look full in His wonderful face; and the things of earth will grow strangely dim in the light of its glory and grace." Let's pray together. Father God, I thank you, God, just for your Word. God, I thank you for just these Psalms and just the study today, God, as we get to look more to your Word, and just to study more about who you are, God, who you've called us to be, and what you've called us to do, God. And as we see from your Word, God, we want to be people who are turned to your presence. God, your presence is offered to all who turn to you. And God, I pray that we will be people who constantly turn and focus and cast our focus and our eyes and our gaze upon you, Father. God, that we will be people who rest in your presence, who rest in your Word, who rest in prayer, who bring our petitions, and God, bring our hardships and our difficulties to you, Father, knowing that you answer us, knowing that you're with us, knowing that you are near to us, knowing that you are a merciful and gracious God who is steadfast in your love toward us. God, I pray, as we see from your Word, that we will be people who are on mission for you, that there are people who are searching for fulfillment and satisfaction in all the wrong places, God, but it's found ultimately in your holy presence, God, that your presence is offered to your people. And so, God, help us to cling to that truth. Help us to cling to your promises and to your presence, and to help us to be a people who are on mission for you and for your glory. God, we thank you for the study, and we thank you for your Word. I pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.